Joining us, Kaya will be also joining us a few minutes late today. He's coming back from being on a panel, so he should be here shortly. We do have a first as our Radiant Nuclear Conversation. Justin, I'd be so grateful if you could come up and introduce them, if you would please. And you too, Steve, if you want. They told me, Justin, and I'm like, okay. It's not a knock on you.
You guys like me better.
I was like, mm.
So I'm Steve Freo. I am consultant for Radiant Nuclear. And I know you get 20 minutes here today to talk, but I'm going to introduce Makai Cartman. He is with Radiant, and he is the answer man to any question you're probably going to have. So I'm going to turn it over to him, because I'm sure you've got. He's got a lot to tell you, but you've probably got a lot of questions for him.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Kaya Cartman from Radiant, Senior Operas Manager. My main focus with Radiant has been all about site selection, and that's going to start transitioning into the actual construction of the factory. So started with Radiant about a year ago, and that's what my job has been, going to various states across the U.S. and evaluating different sites and seeing where would be the best fit for Radiant to kind of house their factory. So give a little bit of background about Radiant, what we're looking to build and kind of what we're doing. So we're a micro nuclear reactor company, and so our units we're building produce 1 megawatt of electric power, about the size of a shipping container, so you can think about 12 feet tall, 12 feet wide, about 40 foot long. They're quite heavy, call it 70-plus tons. So they're portable in the sense that we're going to be mass producing these in a factory, but it's not something that you're going to put down and then decide to move a couple weeks later and then move it to another spot. It's going to stay pretty kind of stationary. So the idea is that, once it's fueled, it's going to provide power for about five years before it needs to be refueled. So five years, it'll be up and running. After that five-year mark, it will need to come back to our facility, where we manufacture the unit. We'll take out the used fuel that's in there, replace it with new fuel, and then redeploy that unit to another customer. Speaking of customers, kind of some of the folks that have kind of been on our radar and who we've been talking to, military has been a big application for us, and so I've been in heavy conversations with them of really understanding their real resiliency. And so if anything kind of happens to the grid, if there's any type of attacks, or if you're in Texas and there's a crazy winter storm that shuts down the entire grid, then that's not really good from a defense perspective if your base is down. So this would be able to provide that power for them and be able to support that critical infrastructure that they have. Also been to support remote industries. And so as an example, one of our kind of public partnerships that we've announced is a mining company in Idaho. And so as you can imagine, when you're in kind of these remote locations, it's usually not cost-effective to bring the grid out there. Also, the next alternative is usually diesel generators, and so they can be pretty costly. And just thinking through the logistics of actually getting diesel to a pretty remote area, costs add up quickly. And so that's where we have a really good use case of kind of being able to drop our units in and be able to operate without any kind of interaction or maintenance that's needed for up to five years. Lastly, just another example I'll mention is remote communities. And so a good example is the northern slopes of Alaska. Some of those smaller communities are completely running on diesel generators. They do a lot of planning and logistics getting that diesel, and in some cases, they're paying $10 per gallon of diesel, just for reference. A size of 1 megawatt diesel generator, that's usually about 50 gallons of diesel per hour. And so they're 24/7 just kind of running these things. And thinking about Alaska specifically, they get all their diesel shipped in during the summer months, and so they kind of have to plan out and think about how much capacity they're going to need for the winter to come. So it takes a lot that goes into that, so it's a very good use case for us. So those are our customers. These will be built in a factory, as I mentioned. I've been across the U.S. looking at different states. I think it's back in late January, early February, where we announced our intent to come to Nitrone County and site our factory here, where we'd like to actually build these units. And so at scale, we're talking about 50 reactors per year. So this is called the mid-2030s to start. We're talking about 75 jobs, growing up to 250 when we are at scale. This would be a campus facility, really just kind of picture an advanced manufacturing center. And so roughly, we'll have 350,000 square feet of space, just to be split across different buildings, with the largest one likely within the kind of 200,000 square foot kind of range. And 90% of the facility will look and feel like an assembly shop and advanced manufacturing center. So we'll have a big need for welders, machinists, a lot of like electronical work, electricians, assembler technicians, and so all those kind of things, as well as just your kind of normal jobs that you need to run any kind of business. And so we have janitorial services and a cafe on-site. There'll be a big security presence, given that this is nuclear, it needs to be protected. And so HR, finance, recruiters, all those kind of things. So I think a big opportunity for the county, and that's why we're really excited, because we workforce was something that was very important to us, and we found that majority of the jobs are already here, and so we can look to source locally, which is our intent, finding local talent and being able to kind of grow that presence over time. Starting conversations with Casper College to understand what could the pipeline look like to add some of the programs that we might need specifically, kind of like around radiation safety, seeing what kind of other nuclear programs we can add, so that ideally 10, 15 years from now, it's all being sourced locally and you're not having to go out and recruit parts of the country. I'll pause there, and I can start taking questions. Just a quick overview of kind of who we are, what we're building, and kind of what we'd look to do at the site we're looking at, just north of Barnum.
Question.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Makai. Had the opportunity to talk to you before you presented, you and your team to the Economic Development Joint Powers Board. I also attended the community town hall you guys held at the Barnum Community Center a couple of weeks ago. So I've got to listen to several hours of kind of question and answer, but just for the sake of folks who maybe haven't had that opportunity yet, or anyone that is tuning in or maybe in the audience tonight that hasn't had that same opportunity as I, do you mind? So some of the questions that I thought were kind of the most pertinent that came up in several of those forums was site selection. What is it about Casper, Wyoming? You know, you looked at a handful, maybe even a dozen or two other sites for the variables that drew you to Casper, why specifically Casper, Wyoming?
Yeah, yeah. So there was a long list of criteria that we had to work through and understand for each of our sites. I'd say what initially kind of got Wyoming specifically on our radar was uranium, knowing that that's where a majority of the uranium is mined in the country today. And so we thought it was just a really powerful story of being able to say, hey, if most of the uranium in the country is coming from Wyoming, but all that uranium is being sent out of the state, it's being sent to other places to be processed and ultimately made into nuclear fuel. So wouldn't it be really exciting if we could have that whole lifecycle kind of within data cell? And so Radiant's on the very tail end of that piece, and so we need the fuel to fuel our reactors. And so there's a couple of other steps before you get there. So you mine the uranium, then you need another company to enrich the uranium, and then you have another company that actually takes that enriched uranium and makes it into the fuel that we would use. So there are a couple of other steps, but it's based on what we've kind of seen with other parts of the country. It's start kind of planting the flag for one nuclear company, it kind of sends signals to other nuclear companies that are out there that, hey, should come here, it'd be nice if there was like this nucleus of nuclear of the same kind of industry within one location. And so that story really got us excited about Wyoming, and then started looking at different parts of the state to see which city, which community would actually make that bid. So Casper soon became on our radar, and largely because of the industry that's already here today, a lot of it that's been used to support the oil and gas industry and all the jobs that exist here already, being on the bigger side of the communities and knowing that they'd have the workforce that we need for being able to supply all the jobs that we're going to have day one and as we continue to grow. I'd say that within all that, Wyoming just being an energy leader as well was an important part of that story. And so knowing that Wyoming is very versed in trying to be one of the top leaders in the country and world for producing energy, so nuclear seems to be a good part of that story as well. There is a piece as well of the actual land that we need, because we need quite a bit of land, and so we're looking at over 100 acres to set our facility, and so that being kind of readily available, the utilities surrounding the site. And so things just started to culminate together and started to make sense. We were putting together materials for our board and to share with the executive leadership and it's starting to write itself for kind of Casper, just kind of checking all those things.
Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Makai, thanks for being here. This is very interesting to hear this. So I don't have concerns personally, but what would your response be to folks who have any safety concerns in particular about production that you're talking about?
Yeah. I'd say in general, nuclear has been very safe. There's been the big headlines made with the few accidents that have occurred, but that's our few in between. There's dozens of reactors operating today within the U.S. that are just safe and it can look as intended. But I'd say we're taking that even further. And so most of those reactors across the U.S., they're roughly in the 1,000 megawatt range, and so 1,000 times bigger than what we're talking about. So that already in itself introduces a whole level of safety factor that we don't have to deal with just because of the sheer size. One of the aspects of our site is that we're able to passively cool our reactor. And so if you were to heat up and you're kind of getting close to what people call like a meltdown situation, we're able to completely shut off our reactor and open up some vents, and just through natural air convection, we're able to cool down our reactor. And so see, with 1,000 megawatt reactors, they're usually situated right next to big bodies of water, and that's because if something goes wrong, they'd be able to pull from that water to cool down their operation, but that's just something we don't have to deal with. I'd also say that we're using a different fuel form than what most of those typical reactors are using. We're using trisulfide, tristructural, anisotropic fuel. And so this fuel, it's size of a poppy seed, so it's very small. And so the uranium that's actually powering the nuclear reaction is within this kind of poppy seed size, and surrounding the uranium are several layers of ceramics. And so these ceramics that are surrounding this, they take over 1,600 degrees Celsius to actually start melting down. So it's very hot, and so it takes a lot to actually kind of get through these layers of material. And so for reference, we're running our reactor at roughly 700 degrees Celsius. And so even if something drastically went wrong and somehow our reactor got to twice its operating temperature, which they can't even do, we still aren't melting down the fuel that we're using. And so that just adds another safety layer. And then the last piece that I'll mention is just the coolant that we're using within our system. We're using helium gas. And so helium gas, just the way that the molecular properties kind of work in our structure, it can become radioactive. And so I know some of the concern with some of the other reactors is that they're using water in most cases, just because it's more efficient at 1,000 megawatt scale, because we're at 1 megawatt, we're able to use helium gas, and so that can't become radioactive. So if there was any type of leak or something with the system, then nothing bad's going to happen, because it's helium, and it's just going to dissipate and not give off those radionuquids.
Follow-up to that is store the facility to fuel and then the facility to, you know, bring the old fuel out, refuel, and then storage.
Yeah, so we have to handle the entire lifecycle of nuclear at our facility. And so as I mentioned, these reactor units will be deployed, and it's going to take about five years or so before it needs to come back to our facility. And so once it comes back, we're doing the refueling, and so we are taking out that used fuel that's in there, and the idea is that we would store that on our facility. And so this is not unlike anything that's being done across the U.S. today. How the kind of larger reactors are storing their spent fuel, it's they're taking it out, they're putting it into dry cast storage. And so basically, they are these big cylindrical canisters that are about 12 feet wide, 12 feet tall. They have kind of a stainless steel kind of cavity with inside of it, and so you place all the fuel in there, you seal up that stainless steel cavity, and then you're basically surround that with several inches of concrete. Lots of studies and cool videos where they're ramming trains through these things and kind of sending missiles at it, setting things on fire, they're dropping it from 30 feet and then setting it on fire, they're merging these things in water. And so they're going through all these scenarios to test just the structural integrity of these kind of storage casks to make sure that wind, hurricanes, tornadoes, whatever natural disaster, have a bad actor trying to access a site, like they've tested it and then kind of put it through the wringer, and there's just not a lot of things you can do to actually kind of break through and release the nuclear spent fuel that's stored. Very well tested, there's over 35 states currently that are storing spent fuel within their state, and so that a new concept and similar to what Terra Power will be doing down in Kewa. So very safe and kind of proven technology for decades.
And it's a separate building?
It'll be in the facility, so we'll set aside acreage. It'll basically just be a concrete pad, and you'll store these canisters on top of that concrete pad.
The fuel center?
The fuel center will be in a separate building.
Thanks. Thank you for being here. I also don't personally have any concerns about, from the safety standpoint. I think you've done a great job of addressing a lot of the concerns that have come up, but as you mentioned, you know, folks sort of have in their minds like catastrophic nuclear accidents. Can you describe what a worst-case scenario situation would look like in your process? I imagine it's quite a lot different than the worst-case scenario that we've seen in some of those high-profile nuclear accidents.
Yeah. I think it's some of those more high-profile that usually ends up with kind of a meltdown, and so that fuel kind of catching on and then kind of ignited and causing explosions and things, and radiation kind of getting out into the public. And so again, because of our size and because of the trisulfide that we're using, it's makes meltdown nearly impossible. But so the way that we've kind of categorized kind of worst-case and kind of one of the scenarios, and we have to work very closely with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission of all this accident modeling, so that they have a good understanding of what are your site boundaries, how far away do you need to be from public routes, and making sure that if there were an accident to occur, you can kind of maintain all of that in your facility. And so that's also part of the reason we're looking at over 100 acres, so that we can have some of that buffer room, so that if there was something to occur, it's clear it affected anybody else, it's just kind of Radiant's property itself that we need to worry about. So kind of thinking about what that scenario is, we've kind of modeled out, okay, what happens if we've been operating for 40 years, and so we have that much spent fuel on our facility? Say all of those casks all at once start leaking, and then at that same time, we're refueling two of our reactors, and something drastically goes wrong there, where all the fuel somehow drops out of its casings and closures, and just modeling out what happens with that, plus all of the spent fuel cask all leaking within the same time. And so that's kind of what we've envisioned as kind of one of the worst things that could kind of happen, and then you also have to take into account the local kind of environment, and so that's taken into account what are the worst winds we could expect at that same time as well. And so it's modeling that out. It's just a very small kind of radius that's created, and that's still very well contained within our facility. And also within these specific kind of nuclear facilities that we'll have, they have much more stringent kind of construction codes and regulations that we need to kind of follow. As I mentioned, the largest building that we'll have is roughly 200,000 square feet. That, the NRC isn't really involved in, they don't have much to say on kind of how we build that, but for instance, where we'll store the fuel, we're going to refueling and de-fueling every reactor, say, very much care how that's constructed. And so you're building reinforced walls and flooring with several mated concrete, and has some separate ventilation systems and kind of security measures in place, so that detectors of radiation and other factors, so that if something does occur, it immediately kind of shuts it, the facility off.
Pat, and then I'll get you in. Oh, you want to go, Matt, first? Okay, so just two questions. So is this a, is this a facility you're going to be manufacturing these nuclear, these microreactors in? Is that what this is?
Yeah, it's intent, so.
And I hear it's based at El Segundo?
Correct.
Is that where the majority of these are being produced right now? Or are they being produced all over?
Right now, we're in the process of building our prototype, and so we don't actually have a working one of these right now. And so we're building our prototype right now, and so we'll be testing that next year at the Idaho National Lab. And so we've been one of two companies selected to test within their dome facility. And so we'll go up there and kind of test our reactor and do all the fueling there to get the data, and the idea is that we're delivering our first unit in 2028. And so to date, I'd say that we've been doing a lot of kind of component testing, and we've done like non-nuclear testing. And so our last biggest test stand that we built was, we had our pressure vessel, we had all the graphite within it, we had the, all the shielding around it, we connected it to our helium loop, so we're actually cooling it, and so we took it up to temperature and up to pressure, but instead of using nuclear fuel to create the heat that we needed, we simulated that with electrical heaters.
Okay, cool. And then just one other thing, you guys, you guys have partnered through Centrus Energy or, is that, that's where you source most of the uranium, where you're going to be sourcing most of the uranium, it's kind of a direct line there?
Yeah, so we won't be sourcing our uranium directly, but.
They will, and you get it from them, right?
We're still in the process of identifying who we're going to work with for our fuel fabrication.
Follow-up question there, if there were any kind of, you know, partnerships working out with any Wyoming uranium companies?
Got it. Yeah, we definitely would like to see that, and we're looking to get more engaged, that community to help influence who our kind of fuel fabricators kind of purchasing from. That would definitely be our intent.
So I've been at two forums, one last night and one last week, where different things came up. One was the state sovereignty against the NRC was one point. The other was a direct loan from the state of Wyoming to Radiant. I know it's not the case from the Business Council, but maybe Justin on that portion could explain, so in case people have questions.
Yeah. I could address the state sovereignty piece, just to finish there. Because I know one of the concerns kind of within that is that the NRC can kind of license a facility to kind of take whatever material it needs and should, and so the idea of Radiant's going to get their license to store Radiant's spent fuel on their site, and then the NRC is going to come in and say, you need to store Terra Power's spent fuel at your site as well, that's not true. That's not something that the NRC can just do. They're currently getting sued by the state of Texas right now for trying to kind of go through a process like that. And so the idea that there's a whole kind of application process and a separate process from what we're going through to be able to store other manufacturers' kind of fuel within your site. And so I'd say just to kind of address that piece, and then I know it's also kind of come up of, NRC is going to have a free brain over any regulations we need to follow, and Wyoming would kind of be left out from that story. That's not how that would work, and at least I know when, and as we were kind of watching the state legislation earlier this year in kind of Cheyenne and kind of how some of those bills and Senate files were kind of worded, it's my understanding, and the intent of those bills is that state shouldn't duplicate what the NRC is already doing. And so if NRC has a set of guidelines, then Wyoming shouldn't also make Radiant do those same set of guidelines. They should kind of adhere to what's already been kind of outlined. But if the state of Wyoming says you need to do more than that, then Radiant needs to do more than that, because Wyoming's ultimately the one that's going to kind of sign off on saying, hey, you can store your spent fuel here. So that NRC can do what they can do from a federal perspective, but at the end of the day, we still need to adhere to whatever the local Wyoming regulations and laws are. So if that'd be the way to add any other types of stipulations or things that it's important for the state of Wyoming to have, they'd still have that power to do some of Radiant, what happened.
Thank you.
Hello, Justin?
Thank you. Economic Development Joint Powers Board is currently in the application process through Wyoming Business Council for VRC. The $25 million number was floated only by the Business Council, and it was an up-to number. So what we are doing is compiling information on the infrastructure needed to build the facility, and we're doing it in stages, because as Makai mentioned, they have to get to Idaho National Labs and test their prototype in a real situation. So what we're trying to do is get, do it in milestones, where we have to run the infrastructure north of Barnum to West Winds Road, and the property that they're going on to is north of West Winds, which is in the county. So we're doing it to those two stages, where we'll want Barnum to be involved, Economic Development Joint Powers Board, and it's simply to run the infrastructure. And that number, we have a very loose number as far as the Barnum component of that, it's in the neighborhood of $6 to $8 billion. And then when they test their reactor, they'll, then that's a milestone that we meet, and then we'll go to the county and other, get the other portion of that drawn across to West Winds. It's a, it's a long process, application process, but of course, none of that, all the money spent north of West Winds will be for infrastructure, also water, sewer, electric, conduit, possibly, and those are the numbers that we're working on. And the application side of that, 10% of that total ask is required to be in cash, as matches from communities, Joint Powers Board, North Water, City of Casper, and so we're just going to reverse engineer that number to figure out who to go ask and participate. At a minimum, we'd ask for a letter of support for the project, I think it's a generational opportunity, but Advanced Casper, Advanced Casper, or at least it's a generational opportunity for communities. So we're compiling it now, we have a very short timeline, because it happens at the state level, there's a lot of talk about, you know, eliminating the Business Council altogether, and that's up to our state legislators. We are simply doing is trying to get access to the dollars that were already allocated to the Business Council. Instead of it going, staying in Cheyenne, we're going to another community. That's been here. Justin? Questions?
So nothing's going directly to Radiant?
And that's really been the big misnumbers, and they believe the check, the Business Council's writing a $25 million check to Radiant, which is unconstitutional. It's going through the Joint Powers Board, it's up to $25 million. It's going through the Joint Powers Board. It's up to $25 million. That was just a number that was floated by the Business Council until we get what the actual dollars for the infrastructure and the campus and the things that can amplify those dollars for to build out. We don't know what that.
If bar none wanted to annex that property north of West Winds and the county said sure, is that possible?
Could be a better question for the county because reactors that they're talking about, these $30 million, it's April 2025 dollars that are talking about for a reactor. If they get to scale and that's 50, 30 million dollar reactors. They're going to fight. Everybody would want to be involved in that, I'm sure, whether it county or. I think that might, that'd be a conversation for later, especially as milestones that we need to meet as a community and as a company in order to extend those utilities and everything.
We have time for a couple more questions. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So public funds used to extend the utilities, electric, all that. I corrected some, therefore if somebody else built up towards that direction, they could tie into that. Whereas if Radiant did themselves, it would be.
Definitely. And there's certainly different ways to tie into that. There's some existing infrastructure that if you have to redo that map. But what we wanted to do is show commitment to community, bar none specifically, on developing all that infrastructure that would be going toward I-25. And you make a great point also, Makai had mentioned that once, once Radiant locates here, I can say there is other interests from other companies that want to remain anonymous. That very much would look to locate right next to them. So yeah, made for thinking, part of the design is we want to extend that out so that we're not going through this process.
Question?
Thanks, Justin. My question is actually. So Mayor kind of teed us up. I know we had only scheduled 20 minutes for this conversation, but like I said, I was at a three hour town hall and there was still plenty of conversation happening after, after the event had kind of officially concluded. So we're not going to be able to get to everything. There's a million questions that we could ask that would all provide some very fruitful insight. I know you guys are planning on doing more town halls and community forums and stuff. So my understanding is that the Science Zone, you've sponsored or partnered with them to do a family steam night there. What was it, May 8th, I think, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM? So I guess I would encourage folks, if they want to meet you and your team in person and let the little ones run around and enjoy the museum. At the same time, I would encourage folks to show up May 8th from 4:00 to 6:00 for the Science Zone Family Steam Night. I made a post on my Cow Camroth Casper City Council War II about the town hall I went to a couple of weeks ago, where I answered lots of questions that people had at the event. I linked to, you guys had a one-page flyer that sounds like you don't have on yet tonight, but I linked to the flyer that you guys handed out at that last town hall that has some great information on it. What are other opportunities for people to connect with you and your team? What future town halls do you have coming up? That's my question for you, and then I'll have a follow-up for next question.
Yeah, Steam Night will be kind of the next kind of big event that we're going to have on May 8th. After that, we're finalizing our schedule this week, actually, and so we should have those dates very soon. But we will have another town hall in May, June, July, and August. And so I need to get all those dates out pretty soon so that people can start counting their own and have them and know when we'll be back in town. And so those will be the big public forums. You'll find us at other things here and there. We're always coming back. I know Matt on my team was here last week, I'm here this week. We'll be back in two weeks and back two weeks after that. And so we're always willing to come out and have conversations and meet with folks. And so if the month cadence doesn't work and we need to be out here more, then we're definitely open to coming out and making ourselves available.
Well, yeah, I've personally really appreciated the bar none town hall. You guys had like 10 members from your team, which the joke was it was like, you know, 15% of y'all's current workforce came to the town hall. So I really appreciated how many representatives you had there. You were willing to stay late. I don't even know how long y'all stayed. It was after me and I was there pretty late. So appreciate how accessible you've been. I would encourage folks, if they have questions, concerns, or would like additional information. Some of us may be able to answer some of those questions, but I'd really encourage them to come meet members of your team because y'all are way more versed on this. I'm happy to scrape for this information when you make it available, but could I commit right now? Will we get, will city staff get a list of these town halls so that, just so that we'll be aware? And I can represent that to my constituents.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Hi, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to meet you and all the work you guys have been doing and investing in our community. Thank you, Council, for letting me speak. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Justin. All right. Open Container Debrief. Who's going to be speaking on? All right. It's all yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. So as you all saw in the memo, the open container area report was in the memo. And there was no significant events in the last year, 2024 season. This program goes from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And we didn't have any issues in this. Last year was, no additional staffing was provided by the police department for that time period, which occurs Thursday through Saturdays every week. Recently, Council had committed a request that we expand the boundaries as well as the the timeframe so that it starts early in May and goes till the end of September. Staff met and talked about it and we are good with that expansion for both. Just keeping in mind, if we put in the resolution, that we can come back and change that boundary if we find that problems arise. We'd like to continue adding additional staffing down there and then there'll be no problems. So it's time Chief Cheney is here and he can answer any questions if you want, or I can answer any questions if you have questions. But that is what we would like to do, just to be the for people, we'll bring the resolution to Council at our next meeting so that we can get it started. Actually, the first meeting will be basic, so it'll start immediately and go through the end of September.
Any questions for the chief or for Flor?
So the only ones that can apply are full retail licenses or how, or brewery, kind of brewery?
Members of Council, yes. So breweries, retail licenses, and distilleries. So satellites can apply for that. They're the only ones who are allowed to have off-premises consumption. So that's why the others can't, because nobody else can take, restaurants can't sell raw.
So the microbreweries can and Amber qualifies with the distillery. Okay.
I got Michael and then I'll get you now. Go ahead, Michael.
Or can you, can you remind me where the, the old, the former boundary, well, existing boundary before we do expand it? Does it end at Durbin? Is that right? On the east, is that correct? So it was just extending it two more blocks. Is that right?
Your Honor, yes. So essentially just including to the nick.
Yeah, to the, yeah.
Correct.
Other questions?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Flor, for the information. Sorry. Chief, are you going to give us a report after we answer questions or are you just present in the case? On the note of the kind of liquor license, I know that came up at the joint OYD, DCBA, DTA meeting was the desire for like restaurants or bar and grill licenses. Are bar and grills currently allowed? No. So I think there was some interest in allowing those folks to participate. But could you clarify for me, Flor, is that outlined in city ordinance and/or state statute as far as who can allow off-premises consumption?
Your Honor, it is in state statute.
So that is not an option for us without petitioning your legislature?
Correct.
Other questions? Yeah.
Get off track, but so it would take quite a bit to include Frosties as an example?
I think there's been some, just, there was some conversation, I remember when we were doing it, that we had talked about that with the boundaries. And it's nothing against Frosties, but it just seems like it's kind of out of that. Go ahead. Yeah, you're welcome.
Also, I think part of the discussion, Chief can add in, is there's some big major intersections there. So we don't know that we want to invite pedestrians to be walking those big intersections that far, so.
Start with that, Chief. The intersections between Frosties.
Yeah, when we looked at that with Frosties, it's just a large intersection after navigating more lanes going through there, so.
Five, actually.
We need to count the big lanes.
So it just doesn't seem like a good idea for pedestrians to. Does Mayor, does the Rialto have a form of barroom? Is what they've got? For the entertainment venue.
Okay. Direction from us, Flor.
Yes, as long as you're all right, we'll go to the next council meeting.
Everybody good with it? Perfect. I was going to say. Thanks, Chief.
Stormy completely, yeah.
We're going to go ahead and take a quick, brief recess. We'll get our other city manager. So we'll take a quick break, real quick recess, everyone. Mr. City Manager? And so we just finished up our open container debrief. And so now if we could go into council priorities, we're covered with that.
Absolutely.
Oh, we're going to flip, actually, we're going to flip something, Carter. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
We're going to do cost containment strategies because we have some people here for that. We did talk about it beforehand. If that's all right with you. Since you're here for that. So we are going to switch stuff over from the cost containment strategy. Sorry to throw that at you.
That's okay. That's okay. No problem at all. Well, with respect to cost containment strategies, what I really hope to do today is give you a little bit of a preview with regard to some of the things we'd like to move forward with and adjust as it relates to adjusting to a budget situation wherein we've lost some revenue in the general fund. And as you know, in the general fund, that tends to be what I would consider one of our more vulnerable funds in that the revenue is largely a revenue stream that the state has no control. When I say that, I mean somewhere between 72 and 75% of the revenues we depend on in our fund are decided upon without council input or council control. So we didn't really have a good way of figuring out if it was over sixty-five and has been in their house for that long. So we had to wait a little bit and really get some information from the assessors. So then the second thing that happened is in this last legislative session, the legislature gave relief to everybody, as far as twenty-five percent of their property. So we got a twenty-five percent reduction in addition to a fifty percent reduction. You can't have both, you have to have one and the other. So, um, both of these, we've been working with the assessor quite a bit to try and figure out what does this mean for the council. The final thing that really happened is in the past couple of years, we've had our property values go up pretty significantly. Um, year over year, it's been double digits. So, um, the legislature also put a cap on how much we can actually increase our valuations of our property. So with these three items, and there's a couple more really small ones, I don't have the information on that one. But for these three items, if we look at the long-term homeowner exemption, that's fifty percent. The city is looking to lose about three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in property taxes. If we look at the twenty-five percent exemption, the city is looking to lose about one point two million dollars in property taxes. And if we look at that cap, so here, think about the cap, the cap will go up, and then you get an exemption on that. We are looking at a total between the two of them of about sixty-four thousand dollars. All of these come together for your money. So then the second thing that happened is in this last legislative session, the legislature gave relief to everybody, as far as twenty-five percent of their property. So we got a twenty-five percent reduction in addition to a fifty percent reduction. You can't have both, you have to have one and the other. So, um, both of these, we've been working with the assessor quite a bit to try and figure out what does this mean for the council. The final thing that really happened is in the past couple of years, we've had our property values go up pretty significantly. Um, year over year, it's been double digits. So, um, the legislature also put a cap on how much we can actually increase our valuations of our property. So with these three items, and there's a couple more really small ones, I don't have the information on that one. But for these three items, if we look at the long-term homeowner exemption, that's fifty percent. The city is looking to lose about three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in property taxes. If we look at the twenty-five percent exemption, the city is looking to lose about one point two million dollars in property taxes. And if we look at that cap, so here, think about the cap, the cap will go up, and then you get an exemption on that. We are looking at a total between the two of them of about sixty-four thousand dollars. All of these come together for your money. Questions up there? What we got there, sorry about that.
No, no, you're good. Questions for Jill?
So. My understanding, the assessor's still, you know, working away at this, um, and they've got a drop deadline in Monday. So. Knowing. We believe like the new senior district, and that's county money, not just the city, but, um. That, that reduction looks like it's gonna be somewhere between, we had anticipated around one point seven to one point eight million. That's booking more like, uh, one point three million on that, and that's one mil. So. Do you think, you feel pretty confident in the numbers you put together, or might it flux upward significantly? Or from the data you've been given? And looked at, what's your confidence level, I guess?
Mayor, councillor, um, confidence is, I, I have to trust in the people that have the information. So when I reached out to the assessor's office, they provided me with the information related to the long-term homeowner exemption. That is something I could not calculate any other way except through Mayor. That information. So as far as, am I confident in it? I'm confident that's what they've given me to calculate that exemption. In addition to the, um, the twenty-five percent reduction, that one is a little bit easier to calculate, because we look at our residential property values. The harder part is getting them out of the county and just limit it to the city. So we are able to do some of that, um, and I am a little bit more confident in those, just because we can tie that out to something. But, um, again, we worked very closely with the assessor's office to make sure that we had those valuations to be able to make these calculations. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. The valuations, um, so the assessments are based on last year's valuations, right? Will new, uh, will new valuations potentially change what the assessment is expected to be? And when are new valuations, annually or that occur?
So the new valuations will come out, if the assessor's schedule is correct, they're working on them now. They will go to the Board of Equalization in the upper round of the year, for the property tax statements to come out. So even if we get an increased valuation, it will not exceed the floor, as I said.
Thank you, Mayor. Jill, didn't you figure into that also, uh, decline in energy production as a calculation as well?
Your city manager, that's actually on my line, but it's too far down, so I appreciate you bringing that to the forefront. Um, so, uh, last year, so in our budget for fiscal year twenty-five, our property tax is six point two million dollars. So when we looked at the Board of Equalization valuation, or about a year ago, um, noticed that it was five, five point nine. It's like, well, what happened? So we contacted the assessor's office, and what they said is that the valuation of minerals that are pulled out of the ground was lower. So it was reducing our taxes there, um, there is a reduction there of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars as well. Which is also included in the compensation. Other questions? Comments? Okay.
That's within the company.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, so, with that in mind, um, that's the reason we feel comfortable. That figure is what we really need to reconcile our budget against, in particular with the general fund. The one point eight, yeah, that's right, that's right. We have had a few things happen that, uh, allows us to offset some of that, some of that revenue loss, if you will. We do see that gambling revenue is up, and so that, as you read in your memo, helps offset some of those losses. You also probably noted in your memo that, um, interest income is also up. The general fund is a benefactor as a result of that, uh, investment strategy providing some benefit there. Um, however, we are not projecting sales taxes to increase. In fact, we are working really hard to be sure that, um, we keep downward pressure on the sales tax revenue stream, given how close we are finding our previous year's projections to becoming in at. Uh, if you'll recall, we, uh, considered, um, if I remember correctly, a one point five percent growth factor for last year's projections. And, uh, and our margin for hitting that particular budgetary threshold now is in the neighborhood of somewhere about like four hundred thousand dollars. So when you consider that against a roughly twenty million dollar revenue stream, to me, that's razor thin. Uh, certainly much more thin than, than I feel comfortable with. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm really not comfortable trying to calculate, uh, a growth strategy in that revenue stream, particularly in the face of what appears to be, um, inflationary pressures, uh, right outside our door again. So, um, as a community, we don't respond well to rev, inflationary pressures, our sales tax revenues tends to stagnate. And, um, accordingly, I, I just don't feel real comfortable recommending or trying to advocate that we try to build some growth into that revenue stream, albeit a big part of the general fund, as you might imagine. The other thing I'm a little worried about is with regard to interest income, um. We have by, uh, virtue of the guidance we've received from our, um, ad hoc investment advisory committee, as well as the, uh, the person that we have on hand, um, that we've hired to, to advise us as well. Uh, we've, we're able to lock in some interest rates that, uh, will prove beneficial to us for the next few years. However, that type of revenue and income stream is dependent upon a fairly static amount of investments in order to generate that type of income over time on a consistent basis. And as you all know, uh, we've been saving up money to do some bigger projects. Uh, the police station, of course, not the least among them. Uh, when in fact, we move forward with that, depending on how much of that, uh, savings, if you will, that we've tried to scrap together over the last few years, uh, you allow me to apply towards that project, um, that will have, uh, an impact with regard to the amount of money that we have stashed away to try to generate interest income off of. Now certainly I wouldn't recommend, or I'm not gonna recommend, you know, breaking apart the perpetual care fund, which is also a big, uh, portion of funding that over the years, the councils before you have set aside for the purpose of generating interest income for care of our once-in facilities perpetually. That won't be a part of the, of the, of the, uh, you know, the makeup here of our recommendations. However, the other funds that we've been putting aside to try to save for this big, this big project certainly be impacted. Uh, and therefore, that impacts interest income. So I don't think that that is a long-term play that you can rely on to sort of, uh, come and act as a backfill strategy, if you will, over time. The other thing that is probably more serendipitous than purposeful, uh, is with regard to another larger savings that we are a benefactor to, and that is with regard to what it is we plan to spend on jail fees. We had some good things happen there, a, a number of factors that we would attribute the downward pressure to that expense category. As you all probably know, we've had jail fees as high as two point seven million dollars. That would suggest is probably a historic watermark for that expense type category. We're hoping, uh, that we can see that number go down over the next year. And that, I think, will benefit what it is that we're dealing with right now by way of trying to reconcile, uh, this revenue loss. However, as you know, um, if we need to put folks in jail, and we need to keep them there, and, you know, we see rates go up again at the, at the facility, that, uh, that hope and that projection could be in vain, as you might imagine. So, um, the, one thing that I'm mostly, uh, feeling confident about in terms of its elasticity and stability, as far as a revenue stream that will help in this situation over time, is actually the gambling revenue. Um, that's proven to be a fairly static figure. It doesn't decrease, um, and actually, it's had the propensity and demonstrated propensity to be going up over time. So, um, I think that is a figure that will go up over time, and, and it benefits the general fund directly. However, it's, it's not enough money to rely on solely to, uh, to make up these differences, as you might imagine. So we've had to do other things in order to try to make up the difference. We, we haven't been able to rely solely on revenues coming in to backfill what it is that we're losing through property taxes. Um, I, just to put a lot of your concerns to ease, I hope, um, we are not, uh, proposing layoffs of any kind. We're not proposing a reduction of benefits or whatever to our employees. Um, in fact, uh, we're really only proposing, uh, not filling just a few positions throughout, throughout the general fund. So those are, those are positions that have come open sort of naturally. And, uh, granted, we've been really critical of any, any of those positions that come open rather naturally, uh, to see if we can't rely on some savings there without sacrificing service. I would also say that as far as our, our very, very core services are concerned, and I'm speaking specifically to public safety and, um, plowing streets and those sorts of things, at this point, I'm not recommending that we do anything to curtail the delivery of those types of services either. So, um, from that standpoint, I, I feel comfortable that barring any other, any other losses or whatever, we won't have to, um, you know, alter or amend what it is that our community is in need of as far as those types of vital services are concerned. However, uh, we do have other things we need to, um, be aware of as it relates to changes that we're incorporating into, into the budget. We have a number of our Parks and Rec Advisory Board members here tonight, um, to, uh, be here and, and participate in this discussion to whatever extent council would like, uh, at the very least to listen in. In that, uh, they've been real helpful in advising, uh, Zuleem and her team with regard to containment measures that we could consider and, uh, things that we would need to amend in order to, uh, get through, um, this budget reconciliation process that we're, we're facing. Uh, one of the things that you have already helped us with is that of adopting a wholesale rate for outdoor water use, and that is primarily in parks and special areas, uh, that would benefit the general fund to the tune of just over forty-four thousand dollars. Not a huge piece of, uh, you know, expense containment here, but certainly something that does help. And so, you know, be mindful of that as we talk about other ways in which we are, uh, addressing the partnerships that we have with our utilities here to, to work with. But before I get into that further, as far as a couple of other things are concerned with respect to the services that we provide through parks and sort of our recreational services, um, one of the other larger things that we're talking about doing is reducing irrigation of twenty-three of our irrig, irrigable areas, uh, which would include, you know, parks and special areas and so forth, uh, to three days a week. Twenty-five areas to five days a week, and to naturalize park areas per the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that you went into detail with, uh, sometime last year. So those recommendations are in concert with what it is the Parks and Rec Master Plan identify. Another area, uh, that most would, would probably observe, particularly for many of our users in the area, in the community, uh, we are discussing and proposing that we reduce snow removal services for trails and parks and, and sidewalks around parks in order to, uh, reduce the dependence that we have on part-time staff to provide that service for us, and allocate that, those efforts where we need to and where we can to other funds to help them with, uh, the services that they provide, Hogan being one of them. There are numerous other smaller efforts that we're taking to try to, uh, contain costs and reduce dollars that go out, and, and in this circumstance, we're talking. contain costs and reduce dollars that go out. And, and in this circumstance, we're talking primarily Parks and Rec again. Another one is we're talking about reducing fertilizing. And that is a savings of about $13,000. Do you can imagine with regard to the size of these numbers that we're talking about? Throughout the organization, we've had a whole host of figures like that that we believe will help bridge the gap. With these kinds of savings alone, that doesn't quite fit the bill, as you might imagine. Some other things that we're talking about doing. We are talking about treating the utilities and our relationship with the general fund, the utilities' relationship with the general fund much more like a business relationship, which in many ways we already do. However, in other parts of the, of the operation, we have not over the years. I think, I think we have certainly experimented with that a, a lot. But we really need to close the loop in some of these things in order to help the general fund be reconciled here. One example of that would include when water and sewer breaks into one of the streets, we typically have the streets crew go out and repair that trench cut. We are suggesting that if water and sewer paid the general fund for that type of service, that would be a realization of an additional $150,000 into the general fund. So essentially the water and sewer fund would be hiring the services of the general fund, which is actually a common practice in many cities and towns throughout the country and even in the state of Wyoming. But for whatever reason, over the years, we've not done. And so those enterprises, when they need to do that, rethink over the next year, that'll be tantamount to about $150,000 in realized benefit to the, to the general fund. Furthermore, when the utilities use engineering services from the general fund, we have dipped our toe into that relationship in the past. We're suggesting that, that that should be dealt with on a more direct basis. And by so doing, the utilities would be paying the general fund $178,000, almost $179,000 in additional benefit to the general fund when we do so on a more direct basis, when we bill that, for that service on a more direct basis. So that would be, again, another benefit, if you will, to, to the general fund. With all of those types of activities, as well as some rate increases that, that would include the Fort Casper Museum to the extent of a dollar, we believe that we will make up a lot of the difference that this 1.8 creates for the general fund for the city of Casper. There is still more work to do, however, to the tune of about $240,000 more. In that we are still realizing a gap of, of that amount. So the department heads and I and Jill still need to put our heads together to try to, despite our best efforts to this moment in time, bridge that gap and make sure that the general fund does not have to take any amount of reserves out of the various reserves available to make up that difference. And so those are the things that we're working on right now to reconcile what it is that, that we've incurred by way of current losses. One of the things that I would suggest, however, is that we not stop this discussion pursuant to what you receive in May by way of a completed and balanced budget. And we will find our way to make up that difference. I'm not sure how, as we sit here now. I thought we had turned the screws pretty hard up until now and it's still not enough. The, the thing that really worries me is what happens if we incur another loss to this extent, again, pursuant to a constitution referendum initiative, however you want to phrase it, that suggests property tax revenues be cut by 50% instead of 25%. To me, that means that we need to come up with another $1,200,000, $1,300,000 in order to, to weather that change in the city's revenue makeup. I think if we wait until that happens and start having those conversations at this point in time next year, we are going to be too late. Because all of the rabbits in the hat that we are trying to pull right now will be deployed. And I worry that we will have to start curtailing real critical core services in order to make up that difference in a year's time. So from that standpoint, what that likely means is that some of the other funds that, that are in place right now, that were they not in place, the general fund would have to step in and make up those differences on behalf of those funds. It's the next level of questions and discussions that we need to start having. Direct distribution is a real good example of one of those funds that were, were it not in place, the general fund would have those obligations to bear by itself essentially. And what that means is a lot of the recreational subsidies that we have historically dealt with through the general fund, we've dealt with it through direct distribution and the mix thereof, and certainly perpetual care has been a a real great tool as it relates to offsetting a number of those expenses as well. Will be compromised in that we will probably start needing to bring portions of direct distribution into the general fund in order to allay and sort of have a bulwark against securing the real critical services that are core to, to what it is that we do as a city. And from that standpoint, if we haven't taken the time to make the direct distribution fund more sustainable by that point, we will be behind eight ball as it relates to needing to use direct distribution to allay some of the reconciliation that we will need to do at that, at that point. So from that standpoint, what I think we need to consider is ways in which some of the larger pieces of what it is that direct distribution supports now be addressed sooner than later. One of the bigger ones outside of the subsidy market is the, the health department contract. It's probably no surprise to you that the health department would like more money. And as a matter of fact, are suggesting anywhere from $25,000 to $100,000 in terms of additional support on top of the $575,000 that the city already provides for that partnership. That is all borne right now by direct distribution. I'm suggesting that we come up with another strategy to, to deal with that contract, particularly if council wants to increase the financial commitment to that department over time. The only way that council really has to do that, if you believe the notion that making direct distribution more sustainable over time, if in fact we need to incorporate its character into the support of the general fund, you've got to deal with big expenses like that in a, in a more sustainable way. And the only way that I know how in order to make it more sustainable over time is to build it into the franchise fee allocations that, and programs that are available to the council for consideration. You have a history of that already. Do that on the part of supporting Advanced Casper. And oh, by the way, Advanced Casper wants more money as well. And that contract is up for renewal. That contract is supported through franchise fees available through the Pacific Core franchise. And that relationship was developed some, well, it must be 10 years ago now, in order to you know, keep up with our commitment to the tune of somewhere like $425,000 to $450,000 a year. So to be clear, what I'm suggesting is in order to create some sustainability, I think that's a way that you can consider to make that happen. If there are other ways that that can happen, particularly in light of the fact that these two agencies are seeking more funding from the city of Casper, I, I don't think direct distribution is a long-term answer. Particularly if we take another hit in property tax revenues being on the decline. Another thing that council has to consider that is, is not a popular proposal is that of considering on a very, very critical basis the, the services that we provide for recreation and leisure throughout the community. Those all take big subsidies, as you all know. And as a matter of fact, that all combined, the cumulative value you will see in the budget will be in the neighborhood of about $3 million. That's when you throw in things like the event center and Hoganon and the rec center and so on and so on. That figure adds up as to the commitment necessary to balance against the revenues that each of those services create. So one of the things that the master plan recommends is that the city of Casper is overbuilt as it relates to pools in our community. And it suggests that that inventory should be reduced. I think that's going to be a question that you're going to have to ask yourself if in fact you believe in the notion of finding different ways to sustain these services over time in the face of declining revenue. Certainly, if sales tax recovers and starts to develop and exhibit a growth potential over the next few years, then I would balance whatever it is we talk about in terms of sustainability measures against the notion that those revenues are recovering and they may in fact help the situation. I can't do that right now. I, I don't feel comfortable that is a revenue stream that we can just arbitrarily raise in order to make these conversations easier. Maybe by the time we get to the delivery of the budget in May and we have those work sessions, you will feel comfortable about pushing for that by that moment in time. But as near as I can tell, as your, you know, staff liaison, I, I just, I just don't see it. Just don't see it. It's a big one and it certainly does help the general fund when times are good. But when times are bad, or times are not as productive, you have to have measures in place or you're, or you're essentially building a phony budget for all intents and purposes. The other thing, you know, that has a pretty heavy reliance on, on direct distribution is transit services. There, there's a pretty large subsidy that comes to support that service. One of the things that transit team has suggested is being sort of the least disruptive, albeit all of it's disruptive when you talk about changes, is that of considering service on the weekends. We provide Saturday transit services, you were aware. And as you are also aware, it, it's not the highest demand for those services throughout the, the, the six days that we operate. So that kind of difficult question will need to be, need to be addressed and dealt with as well. Which I assure you will not be easy to discuss either. None of these are exciting topics to undertake. But they are not topics we can ignore either against the backdrop of revenues in the general fund being on a two-year decline, or I should say a three-year decline, given what we've heard from, from the legislature. So those are the ideas that we have at this moment in time. That's the trajectory, the planning trajectory that, that we think you should consider as we move forward from this point. And without a doubt, the budget will be at a point in time where we can flesh out a lot of these discussions in more detail as you, as you prefer. But for now, that's sort of the preview that we have, that we would like you to have in mind as we enter into the last portion of this budget preparation discussion. And that's all I have. So questions, thoughts about this cost containment plan that's moving anyway, Amber, and then I'll get you there.
Carter, going back to your suggestions about utilities covering the cost of streets and engineering services that are currently being used by those utilities. What would you estimate? Do we have an estimate yet? It's $150,000, $170,000 a year. Do you have an estimate of what that would mean for rates?
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you asked that question because one of the things that I would also suggest that might be a counterbalance to those funds that I would suggest would help the rate discussion would be the following. We outsource a, a bill production service to the tune of about $200,000. We believe that with a one-time purchase of roughly, I'm going to say $30,000 for the machinery equipment that we could, like I say, make a one-time purchase for, we could save that $200,000 contract and, and do that all internally with the right, with the right equipment on hand. So that I think would help the absorption situation that the utilities would incur by paying more appropriately for the services that they receive from the general fund. The other thing that I would suggest is, and we've talked about this before, is resurrecting the conversation about incentivizing the the reduction of paper bill use. We believe that at least initially, if we assess a small fee, we could realize a gain of about, again, I'm going to estimate here of $150,000, $120,000 in the term, in the, in the form of fees that people would pay for the premium service of receiving a paper hard copy bill. And we believe that over time that will be incentivized to reduce the paper copies and therefore reduce what it is that we dedicate by way of labor to producing that, that medium of, of bill statements. I, I think through efforts like that, as well as others that we will need to bring forward over time, the, the services that the utilities buy from the general fund will essentially be washed out. And I don't believe it will have a rate impact. That's not to say we won't have rate increase discussions, however, because as you know, we've got a huge capital lift that we need to conduct as it relates to making significant repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. Those little potatoes type things that I'm talking about with billing and those kinds of things and buying services from the general fund, not be a drop in the bucket with regard to the capital lift that we got to consider. And rates, of course, is going to have a role in that, hopefully not the entirety of, of that role in that lift. But certainly will be a feature of how we deal with that large capital bill that's coming up. Long answer, counselor, but that's where my mind's at. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Where, Carter, did you say direct distribution? It's in the budget?
Mayor, Counselor, direct distribution is its own independent fund right now. And a lot of the, the things that I mentioned are siphoned through direct distribution instead of the general fund, so that the general fund wouldn't be compromised with regard to those services, if you will, that the direct distribution fund hosts currently.
Tony, remind me, is our portion of direct distribution about 3.4 or 4.4?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, that, that Actually, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, that allocation is more along the lines of five to six every year from the state.
Long-term, I don't know if we can count on that being there. Not this session, but the session before. Now Chairman of Appropriations made the comment that it should go away and small towns should figure it out on their own. Hagerton and Midwest cannot. But, you know, if I could, Mayor, so I know in the past we've used the fifth cent. And I'm not talking about doing anything different with this current fifth cent. But in the future on the fifth cent, which is coming up in '26, typically, I don't believe Casper has typically used it for operations. Used them more for capital and other projects, buying police cars, buying fire trucks, that type of thing. So, at some point, I'd kind of like to talk about countywide six cent on infrastructure. And this next go would be a perfect timing to alleviate the problems with sewer treatment. My vision and bills, bills needs help, you know, with water sewer, or water in particular. Evansville needs help, or none will need help. And definitely Midwest, Hagerton need a lot of help. They've still got some wood pipes up there. So, but that's not for today. But I think we have to take a serious look at that and start talking about that. Let alone the fifth cent, getting that approved again. But perhaps in the future, we need to look differently at that fifth cent. Like Cheyenne uses a lot of it for operations. They utilize the sixth cent to build their fire department. Some of those needs to augment that. So, and have done a great job with that. So, I've got more, but I'll wait.
Other questions?
In relationship to the direct distribution fund and the variety of draws that we have on that, since I've been on council, Zalima and her team have been working really hard to to make each of our different facilities less of a draw on direct distribution. So I'm wondering, it feels like we've gone pretty far in that direction. I don't know how much room we feel like there is yet to go outside of, you know, increasing rates exorbitantly. Do you have a sense of, you know, do we feel like we're 90% of the way there in terms of smaller changes that we can make to make those things less of a draw? Or is there room yet to go to keep working to make those things?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I would say that indeed we have made a bunch of progress in terms of understanding our goals and understanding what it is that we think we can do in order to continually over time reduce those subsidies. But I would not say we're there at this point. And I would say that situations like the one we're in now places a premium on the direction that those goals take from here on out. Which means, you know, I think we have to continue to be very critical of fees. I think we have to be really critical of the services that we render as a part of that fee structure and see what it is that we can do to try to bring that chasm closely, more closely together. So that again, sustainability over time for those kinds of services can be more appropriately achieved if possible.
Carter, if I understand the memo correctly, the delta is 755,000 this year to make things balance, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, actually, we believe now that that delta is closer to $240,000. So, with regard to the number of things I've talked about tonight and some of the other larger initiatives that were discussed in the memo, we have narrowed that gap to roughly a quarter of a million.
So, I'm not worried at all really about this year. But I mean, I feel very confident that staff can take the necessary cuts, you know, with the adjustments you've talked about in revenue streams and so forth. Those smaller reductions across departments and so forth. I, you know, to me, I think any increase in any areas is kind of out of the question unless the money falls out of the sky for this year. But, you know, we can, we can, this is sustainable for maybe two or three years if, you know, fertilize the parks and et cetera, et cetera. Maybe we sell off the event center, sell off Hoganon or do something to raise revenue. I don't know. But I think those are very short-term answers. And I appreciate what you're saying about the long-term. If this becomes a more permanent situation, then I think that, you know, we're going to have a very different conversation about strategies to contain that loss, you know, by probably not know the difference that we didn't fertilize the parks or do things like that. They will.
I get a lot of emails about the grass and the snow around the parks and all that stuff. I think they'll know.
Well, we have an answer though, why that's happening. Other than we just didn't get to it. Anyway, but I, I, I'm thinking of, you know, it's just going to have to be a conversation about, you know, those other, you know, there were painful reductions that are not in, as you said, in the core services areas, absolutely. So that, that I think is, and that I think has to be part of our strategy is educating public and legislators about that early. And if this is going to continue to be a theme with the legislature to reduce property taxes and reduce revenue, we're going to have to have a strategy to educate folks about this is what this looks like in the reality.
I agree, and I appreciate that sentiment. However, we tried really hard, especially our delegation.
Yeah, sure.
Here in our, not everybody, but there were the delegation to express to them, as you all know, when I went on Facebook to say there are ramifications to this type of stuff. A few years, and I'm not being mad at it yet. I know I'm kind of pointing at it.
I know, yeah.
But the problem with it is that a few years ago, and I've always used this example, we were a council, we were looking at some tough times and we went to Carter and we said, Carter, make cuts. Make it, it's going to hurt. Said, okay, perfect. And so we went after transportation. Make cuts, we were looking to make cuts there. We were looking to make cuts at Fort Casper and recreation type stuff. We had an outpouring of people that came and showed up that were mad because we were doing that. If we have to make very painful cuts to make it, if this is what ends up happening in the next two to three years, that's the reality of it. And we as a council have to stand by that to support our staff. And I want to make sure that that's heard because this is what's going to end up happening. That's the reality of it. And we tried to talk to some of our delegates. And that's the frustrating part. We invited them, we talked to them, they didn't show up. So, that's my frustration.
Well, and that was my point about the voters. I think voters have to understand that man's going to have one city. They have to be as much of an advocate for the city or help us become advocates for the city's services as we are.
Yeah, thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much.
No, I'm sorry, I went off on it.
No, no, I didn't.
Others? Questions for Carter about this?
Fields, again, Magic Kyle, listen in.
I was going to say.
Digesting. So, when it comes to parks and fertilizing, so I'm assuming the golf course, municipal course would take precedent in the soccer fields. You can't just starve those to death, not water them and take care of them with the amount of use during the summer that they get, so.
Like, it could happen. I mean, I'm not saying it's going to, Pat. But I think nothing, let me say this, and I don't want to speak for the city manager, I'll let him do it. I don't think anything's off the table. And I think we have to come to that realization.
Okay, and then follow-up to that is police and fire. So, I'm guessing right now we're down, I don't think we're down to anybody on fire, from what I've heard. But police, I think we're still down officers. And sorry, suggesting a hiring freeze? You know, on new officers or cross-the-board, like a hiring freeze or what's the suggestion there?
Mayor, Counselor, the suggestion is not that necessarily of a hiring freeze. To me, that means that positions come open naturally, they can be filled again. We haven't taken that step. We certainly have in the past, as you may remember. But at this point in time, that's not what I'm recommending. There are some key positions that we're not backfilling right now. But I wouldn't call that, those types of steps, a full-blown hiring freeze. My hope is actually that as far as the police department goes, we'll be fully staffed by the end of the year, by the end of the calendar year. And that'll be a threshold we haven't met in probably 10 years. We've come close a lot of times. I don't want to jinx our efforts there, but we're hoping to be staffed. That's our goal, to be staffed by the end of the calendar year.
Also, you mentioned about the health department at Vance Casper. So, you know, a decision was made years ago to the health department, the state has not kept their end of bargain. I think we were under the same contract, on the nursing contract for the last 10, 12 years at the dollar amount. And not this legislature, but the previous session, they got that partway up and it was included in, you know, the final step was included in the supplemental, governor supplemental budget. But that didn't happen. But me personally, I think we've got to stick in there with the health department. We're obligated. And I don't know if you could ever unwind and give that back to the state. Or do I think we necessarily want that? I think home rule is better. On Vance Casper, I think it's, I mean, you heard some results here today. And that's through their efforts. I don't think the treasurer, state treasurer constantly reminds when people are in front of him about, you know, the Torrington area passed the economic development. They've got a quarter cent, maybe they've got a half cent down there. I don't see our voters passing that at this point in time. That would be the only other possibility, you know, to raise revenues for that. But I think both of those are worthy. And I would point out that the county puts in, for budget-wise, I think they're 700 and some thousand. Five seventy-five, I think. But my other understanding, just, so on the enterprise accounts, water sewer, trash, is we didn't co-mingle those. But in order to cover these engineering fees and others, shouldn't we be looking at increasing those rates in order to cover those dollars? I'm sure they have, you know, those different areas have reserves, but you don't want to get to a point where we don't have money for managing rents. You know, to the state on some of those, just like the landfill right now with the slurry wall or whatever that's called, or the old landfill, but remediation. But some of those things, so are we keeping up, you know, with this last rate increase? Do we need to look at another rate increase? Our utility rates, I think, are very fair in my mind, but.
Mr. Mayor, some great points you made there, Counselor. Just a couple of quick responses. I am not going to bring forward a budget that suggests defunding the health department or economic development. I, so you won't see that. Am I going to be critical of increases? Absolutely. And I think as your manager, you would expect me to be. As it relates to the relationship between the general fund and utilities, if we do rate increases, which I say if, I don't want to mislead that we won't be because I'm sure we will, it will be the lion chair reason because of capital needs versus this relationship with the general fund. So, I want to be emphatic. What I'm talking about as far as the business relationship between the utilities and the general fund not be the reason that rates increase. It'll be way more the reason to deal with capital concerns that we have over time than it will ever be because of these kinds of things that we're doing by way of adjustments now.
Carter, can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
So, it's been suggested by people from the state level that have said that we have a cushion to spend out of our savings. Is that a responsible thing for us to do to say we need to balance it by spending our savings into that? Because I know that's been suggested based on all the city, especially Casper, has that load of money to sit on their savings to be able to balance everything and make it work. Could you share responsible to us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, I place a pretty high premium on not using a savings account to balance the city's checking account, if you will. And so, for the 24 times that I've brought a budget forward for various councils to consider over the years, I've never had to do that. I don't plan to do it this time around either. Because I don't think it's prudent to use a savings account for ongoing expenses related to the city's ongoing operational expenses. Discuss the savings accounts, if you will, and the reserves and so on that the city does have on hand. It's always been my advocacy that those dollars are used to leverage larger amounts of dollars to come into the organization, whether it be in the water fund or other funds throughout the organization. And/or to take on capital projects, even if we have to stash dollars away over time. So, you know, essentially creating a savings account to do projects, whatever project it might be. You know, certainly given the size of some of the projects that the city of Casper has, over the years, we have had to take on debt. But that debt has been few and far between and has historically been relegated to utility needs and plant upgrades or larger sewer type. Uh, or, or larger sewer type, or larger, I should say line type upgrades. So, um, uh, we, we, we've tried to be extremely judicious when it comes to the use of debt. And certainly when it comes to the use of savings to balance the operational needs of the operations of the organization, but wherever that might be.
Thank you, Carter.
You bet, you bet, no problem, no problem.
Follow up to that a little bit. Is, is, I just wanted to stay, make sure I understand, you're talking about savings account. That's not the same as the six months operating cost that's, and which is, is that like a statutory requirement of three or six months of operating costs?
Mr. Mayor, councillor, uh, thank you for asking that. I, I, I'm using savings account as a, as a rather ubiquitous term to discuss money that we have saved in some form or fashion. We definitely have policy-driven reserves in place, one of which you just alluded to. Uh, that however, is a policy driven by this council, not the state. Uh, same with the water fund, the same with the sewer fund, same with the sanitation fund, albeit all sort of different shades and, and levels. The golf fund, for example, has a policy-driven savings account, so reserve. Um, so throughout the organization, there are goals and targets that we try to meet every time we bring you a budget. Unless you have a capital objective that temporarily reduces those reserves or available cash balances, and that does happen from time to time. But that doesn't mean that we use operational dollars necessarily to try to make up that difference. Um, particularly in the general fund. We, we really don't use operational money to do capital.
If you're along those lines, would you consider any of the council's policies or reserve policies to be out of alignment with best practice or what you've seen industry standard?
Mr. Mayor, councillor, um, hopefully it helps you feel good about the general fund to know that the hundred and twenty days that councillor Bond just referenced, uh, real briefly, that very much is in line with what GFOA would recommend as an industry standard. And, and in many cases, there are cities and towns that go above and beyond that, even in Wyoming. City Casper does not. We kind of follow that industry recommendation. Uh, same is the case for our utilities. Um, it's a little bit of a different nuance in utilities wherein GASP, which is another, um, regulatory agency, uh, suggests that, um, capital depreciation be, be set aside in, in the utilities. Which is different than the general fund. We don't do that in the general fund, but the utilities we, we do to a certain extent. That too is in keeping with industry recommendation and generally accepted practices. Um, the only thing that might be different would be with regard to our use of the perpetual care fund. That perpetual care fund was established, um, you know, years and years ago, maybe even decades ago, as a means of trying to backstop the subsidies that the rec and leisure services require to operate. And care for buildings and, and those kinds of things. So that, uh, that has had a presence in the city of Casper pantheon of financial strategies for a long, long time. We have tried to maintain a thirty million dollar corpus, which is also driven by council policy. And, um, with, with the rare exception of where we've made loans to, uh, a couple of our stakeholder partners that, uh, is, is, has been coming back ever since, so, um, that I would say is probably the biggest difference. Not all cities and towns have something like that, but they're best practices. It certainly would be, yeah.
So is that considered like sinking fund in your mind or on the depreciation side?
Mr. Mayor, another great question, uh, councillor. We actually do have a sinking fund in place, uh, as well. Um, I, you probably remember, because I think you were on the legislature at the time, when, uh, Fire Fund A was having its struggles. Um, and the state required that the member organizations pony up a certain amount of money to help rejuvenate that fund and put it back in the black, so to speak, at the state level. Uh, the city's obligation was to contribute six million dollars over 20 years, I believe it was. And so we, we did some calculations and suggested to the, the council of the day that actually if we set aside five million right now and treat it as a sinking fund, wherein over time it sort of pays back that bill, the value of investment income that comes into that fund would save us that additional million one hundred thousand dollars by the time that that 20-year time clock runs out. So that is, in my mind, more of what people would view a sinking fund as. Perpetual care is a static fund that is meant to derive interest income, the income of which we use to offset subsidy requirements for a certain set of, of operations, the general fund not being one of them.
Which I, I don't think Mayor, we should touch.
A hundred percent. Questions? So Carter, could you kind of just lay out for us what the next, I mean, obviously we know that you're going to be coming with more proposals, ideas, looking at the future in the next year or so, as we see the unfolding of the state legislature, if they do make certain more changes, more, uh, permanent changes that could affect us. Is that going to be discussed in this budget session for long-term, or are we just looking at this next year? Because I think you characterized it, we need to start thinking about not getting caught with our breeches down, if you will.
The, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, so don't let me miss out on any portions of that question, because I think it's a good question. Uh, the short answer for what you, you should expect to see in May would be a delivery of a budget that hopefully will have mitigated the entire gap of, uh, lost revenue in, in the general fund in particular. Um, and again, we're still working on a two hundred and forty thousand dollar gap that I, I, I plan hopefully to have completely erased. Um, so in May, you're going to see that budget, and that of course lays out the plan for fiscal year twenty-six. However, I, I would suggest that it also needs to be a jumping off point to have a very serious conversation about the sustainability of the direct distribution fund. Um, to have a discussion about the use of capital dollars that we have on hand to do bigger projects that are on our very near horizon and the impact that it will have on interest income over time. Uh, I think we will need to talk about, uh, the role that franchise fees could potentially play in supporting some of our partnerships and, um, and talk about the ways in which we sustain our rec and leisure services over time as well. Uh, so again, in my estimation, jumping off point, but we can't forget the progress that we need to make on a, a host of capital projects that we still have on our, on our horizon that unfortunately has kind of a time clock associated with it as well.
Just follow up to that. I don't try not to talk as much, because I want everybody else to get, be able to talk, but the question obviously is, are you going to come back with proposals this next budget for us to consider in the future that we should be looking at cutting now? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
So we'll have to make hard choice, I mean, fairly shortly, is what you're saying.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think we can kick the can on some of the larger conversations that we need to have in preparation for, but, uh, very realistically could be another property tax hit by this time next year.
Thank you.
No problem.
Well, until March of next year on direct distribution, um, probably no any further ties next February, March, what they're going to do on additional property taxes or continue, um, this trend instead of waiting and seeing. The other thing that, uh, at the forum last week, um, that I noticed was um, a little bit of a pushback on the referendum, uh, in twenty-six. If I understood the comments correctly, but then acquisition value, which will take years uh, between constitutional amendments, um, and putting that, trying to put that into place, I would estimate four years down the line. Um, that, that, my guess is that'll be crippling, not only to our communities, but on terms of the state, uh, even though they don't get any property tax, but we'll, I think we'll know more by then. And I appreciate having the conversations now, um, rather than wait, but some of this we really won't know until the next budget, our, our next budget cycle. We also have to worry about, uh, the spec tax. Um, we don't know yet what collections look like. Um, and probably we'll know for what another month, um, if we're trending. Uh, but might that go the full two years? Um, uh, and would we, if, if those four projects, we get to the two-year mark, it ends regardless, then we might be short. We don't know that yet, because we haven't seen any trends yet, because it's just started April first. Um, so should we take, be taking that into consideration in these budget talks for ourselves?
I, I would agree.
Alfred.
Last thought, um, about, um, the potential around this next session. Um, I do believe we had some support from our delegation for backfill, but because the supplemental budget was not passed, we did not realize that for this, um, for this budget season. But, um, I, I do feel like that's still a really important conversation, and it did seem to be a point where we had a little bit more agreement, um, with some of our, um, delegation. And so I think we should continue to, to have that conversation, because that's something that could be addressed in the next budget session.
Pretty, like, priority communities, though, the backfill?
Yeah, well, they, they had a variety of different, um, proposals. Um, yes, I, I do believe where they ended up was, um, was the deficit communities or whatever they call them. But, um, but, but I think that we did have some support for Neutona County being included from some of our folks, so, um, though that did not materialize, I think we should continue having that conversation.
And Mr. Mayor, to be, to be purposely emphatic, um, any backfill provision would be helpful, whether it be in the form of straight backfill, whether it be in the form of adjusting sales tax distributions with the state, all of that would help. Any of that would help, and it would help the conversation be much, much easier.
Right.
Um, did I hear you correctly earlier, Carter, that our sales tax projections will be based on zero percent growth as opposed to the typical one point five? Is that what I understood?
Your councillor, that's correct. And, and last year was the year that we used one, well, current year, I guess you'd say, is where we use one point five growth factor. We're suggesting none, it's coming here.
I agree with that. I've been, I think, voicing some concern the past several months about just the unpredictability, the inflationary pressure we've been under pretty much my entire tenure on council. I absolutely advocate being very aggressive, um, very conservative in our projections and very aggressive in our sort of operations and trying to operate as lean as possible. I'd rather have some excess revenues at the end of this next fiscal year than trying to squeeze blood from a turnip and, and having to face some of these other additional, uh, you know, burdens that we might be facing next year. So yeah, I, I totally agree and, uh, think we need to be super lean this next year. And when the one cent comes up again, uh, allocation next summer, I think we need to be really aggressive in our pursuit of keeping that as strict a infrastructure as possible. You know, there's things that I have liked that we've done in the past, river restoration and other stuff that, um, I think we're going to have to have on the table.
Agreed. Well, I want to recognize one, and I want to recognize the staff's hard work, what they've had to do, and I know this is not easy for everyone. And I know the parks and rec is really kind of taking the burn, um, what it looks like, and so, um, just want to recognize them, and I think as a city council, I think I can speak confidently, the city council, the staff work that you guys are doing, um, all the department heads, Carter, um, this is not easy. Knew this wasn't going to happen. We'll do the best that we can, we'll be transparent and honest with our, with our community as we move forward and try to do the best, and I agree with Kyle. We have to just be lean, figure it out. We trust you guys.
Well, thank you.
You guys are professionals. Appreciate it.
Mayor, um, just one last thing, Carter, um, Mayor in particular, you brought up about the conversations with the legislature. Um, I would remind us, because I had to go back and look, uh, representative Locke's original proposal had a hundred and twenty-five million backfill. Um, it, I think it sunsetted pretty quickly, um, but that went away really fast. Um, but at the forum last week, um, down at the, uh, Calery, um, both Tony and Jamie Lee, um, commented about getting together, um, with us, so.
I don't think we have that actually planned.
Okay.
So we will be, we've been kind of working on that since the legislature.
Okay.
Session ended, and I think that's coming up shortly.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll look forward to those conversations, but I think it's important that we have those, albeit a little late. I think that it's important that we have those conversations, yeah. All right. Thank you, Carter.
Thank you. Thanks for the input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question. Okay, council priorities.
Mr. Mayor, uh, councillors, this is the discussion relating to priority-based budgeting. Uh, as, as you all recall, there was quite a bit of, uh, concern that maybe the draft that council had put together pursuant to the facilitated discussion we had back in January, I believe it was, uh, seemed a little overwhelming. And council gave the mayor the blessing to organize a task force that, um, uh, had the charge of streamlining all that input into a more concise, meaningful, um, demonstration of the council's priorities under a certain segment of, of, uh, interest areas, if you will. Um, and those are the, the columns that, that I think numbered in, I think we had seven of those columns. Um, the task force got together with some, uh, staff representatives and, uh, did a fantastic job of whittling all that information down um, to a, a, a more consumable size, in my opinion. And, uh, we wanted to share that with you tonight and get any of your feedback or any other direction that you have. Uh, tonight is a really critical juncture with regard to that direction and input, because as you know, we're trying to provide you some information as a layer of analysis to include on this budget that we're preparing and concluding right now. So your input tonight will be very valuable. We plan to take it and run with it and conclude what it is that we're doing on this half of the budget preparation activities that we've been engaged in for quite some time.
Conversations. So feedback. So anybody, anything from this task force, I guess we can start there, but Pat, if you want to kick us off? But Pat, if you want to kick us off.
Well, I'm, I wasn't involved with the task force. I just wanted to thank those that took the time to get involved. I, you know, and I read through this. I, I'm, I think it's boiled down. And my opinion is run with it. But I still think it's overly complicated in whatever quadrants this is going to enter into and how this is really going to help us. I, I, I can't grasp. But, but that, but again, thanks to those that took the time to boil this down because yeah, that was way too much for this whole thing. So.
No, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, then I'll get you.
His task force want you guys to especially do is go through and look at our prioritization. Read pretty much on these, but we want your guys' input as well to see if you've got the right things in high priority, low priority, medium priority. So if you want to look through those. And once we get that done, then the staff will look at this and they will compare it with their programs, what they're spending money on and make sure that they are in agreement with our programs and stuff, or in agreement with what we as a council feel our priorities are. Everybody can make sure and look through that.
So just give a little bit of detail for the process that we went through on the task force to come up with what you see here. It was really an exercise in trying to be more concise about how we're describing the, the different areas here. Trying to eliminate, there were some that were, I, I felt like overly prescriptive. For example, it might say something like strengthen and enhance public safety resources by doing X, Y, Z, and on and on. And so we sort of cut the by doing and out of it. It really just focused on the, what it is that we want to achieve and less about the how, because we felt like this was not the appropriate document to express how and tactics and strategies that we might use. So I think that made it a little bit more clear. We tried to, we did a little bit of moving things from one category to the next where we felt like they maybe were, were better suited. And then did some elimination on the original document. You saw there was some amount of effort to combine certain cells to, that we felt like were maybe redundant or could be combined. So we went further down that road to, to combine or eliminate where we felt things were redundant without adding value to the document. So that was sort of the first phase. And then we did go through and prioritize high, medium and low. And so, and I do feel like, I think we did a good job of synthesizing the answers that the council gave. But we, in that process, the part that we all took part in, we really didn't get into prioritization. So this is really just the opinion of the three of us. And so definitely, I, I didn't feel sort of that I could reflect where you all might, where you all might feel the priorities should lie because that wasn't really a feature of the initial conversations that we had. And so definitely would like input and feedback about how we sort of, you know, how, how we categorize the various items that you see here. So we were really just trying to use our best, our best guess about how this council would feel about the, the various things on the sheet. So definitely look for some, some insight there from you all.
Just a couple, you know, part of the exercise that, that staff undertook pursuant to the handoff here that we're talking about tonight was to look at those, those remaining priorities and so forth into seven columns that, of interest area that you identified and applying them against our programs that we have. And there's a variety of programs throughout the organization, as you might imagine, making sure that there is a connection. And quite honestly, some didn't have a connection. As a part of that exercise, we noticed a few little tweaks that we'd recommend that we didn't have in time for the task force to consider. If it's okay with you, can I give Jill just a minute to go over that? They're, they're really minor compared to the work that's taken place here so far.
Welcome back, Jill.
Thank you for having me again. So we did just have a very few minor ones. And this will be up to the council, whether you decide to make these changes now. Come back and make some changes. Totally up to you. The one thing we noticed as we were going through the section that we had is that in safety section, the last one said safety of city facilities. Great, that's a good one. But then in number three, column three, which I believe was infrastructure, we also had one that said maintenance of. And we felt that those two tended to go right along with each other. So we ended up having two all of the time, so just one. So maybe a little bit more clarification on what does it mean to have a safe facility? And what does it have a maintained facility? Might be something you guys want to think about. The other two items that we talked about was really just doing more of a call out. The, the council has worked very hard on sports tourism. But we have an item within the priorities that talks about tourism, but it doesn't specifically call out sports tourism. Do you want to do that? That's something that may need an additional box that would specifically relate to that. The one we talked about was infrastructure. And within infrastructure, I know sometimes we said buildings, sometimes we didn't. So maybe that might be something to clarify is whether your infrastructure, your buildings, or whether it is something separate. So those were really the things that we saw that we thought we would give you a little bit of feedback. And that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Jill.
You.
Thoughts on that? Even from the task force, maybe? What's your thought about that?
Sure, I think on the first item, I think it's a good point to distinguish between business and safety. When I think of, if we wanted to make that distinction, which I think we should, thinking about safe city facilities might be something like, we just redesigned City Hall to be safer for staff, for instance, here. We've made safety upgrades to a variety of city facilities, both for staff and for, for guests coming in. And so that may be a little bit different than when we think about how we maintain those buildings. It may be include different capital needs and that sort of thing. So perhaps we get rid of well-maintained there and just let the maintenance be part of the, the maintenance discussion that happens later on in the document and just say, safe. Safe could also mean, you know, we've got, we've got police here, you know, on, on and during council meetings, for instance, right? And that's an expense to that department that you need a place to go. And so I think that's an element of safety as well. So it could be personnel expenses or capital expenses. So they're different than maintenance and operational expenses. So, so I would say we just get rid of maintained on that, that this is A6. And just say, you know, ensure safety of safe facilities or something like that.
Do you guys are comfortable with that? If we put that at adjustment? Jill?
Do we want to talk about the, she made three.
Oh, did you make three? Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, yeah, let's talk about the other, the other two. My bad, sorry.
See, this is why we didn't let you be part of the task force.
I was shut out.
You're just, you're just trying to move things along too quickly.
Shut out. No, you don't. You guys probably didn't matter without.
So there was also sports tourism. So that would be maybe D6. D6 was sports tourism. The one that I was talking about was A6.
But I thought she said something with tourism.
Yeah, yeah.
Sports versus.
It's tourism. Like I said, this council has worked very hard on bringing people in from out of town for sports-related events, tournaments, that type of thing. We really didn't call out anything within the priorities we talked about.
So I think we could add it to D6. That's where we talk about tourism. So if the D6.
The livability.
Yeah, we took tourism out of livabilities and put it in economic vitality. So I believed, I guess it is there as well a little bit, but I believe that tourism is an economic driver for us, so better there.
So add it in, into the wording of D6, is that what you're?
That we must have tourism included.
Everything.
Specifically called.
Task force is okay with putting that in there? Remember you guys felt?
I actually feel like it, it was in there at some point. And, you know, perhaps we were too eager in our, in our efforts to remove words. So I do think, you know, that, that did exist in the language that was initially presented. And so I, I have no problems.
Counsel, are you okay with?
Yeah.
It looks like the task force is good with it too.
Not sure. I. It's true, some kind of envelopes. It wraps everything but sports tourism. Say encourage tourism, comma, sports tourism.
Yeah, I think that would work. Or we leave it to your best judgment to, to work it in there. Yeah. I don't think that would work. I could just make sure I got it right. So under D6, we. Tourism. And or including or. Yeah. First one was what, Jill?
Infrastructure. Council was related to building, buildings. I'm sure. Is that under G or?
It's under C, I think. Don't maintain infrastructure. Is that what we're talking about?
To tell you whether or not we think infrastructure includes buildings. That one? That would sure make.
Option two. Adding of buildings in there, is that what we're saying?
Buildings is there.
C3.
So. Yeah, so I think the question of council is, do we want to conceptualize city facilities as part of infrastructure?
Did you guys have a lot of conversation around that at all? Or was it not as far as trying to put that all together? How much you did?
We did have some conversation about it and we did make that decision, but I wouldn't say it was a lot.
Okay.
Was a decision point, but it's, we certainly didn't belabor it. So if somebody has an alternative opinion, I, I don't think we were entrenched on it. Hey.
Belabor, please don't.
I mean, the definition of infrastructure is basic physical and organizational structure and facility, including power supplies.
That's where I felt like it belonged personally.
Staff okay with that? If we were okay with it?
Consider that a thumbs up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, task force. Appreciate you guys. I do, I do want to, I do want to call, just shout out to the mayor for pointing this task force. This brilliant task force. Without my appointments, this never would have happened.
Good point.
Amber, go ahead.
Carter, I think this is a question for you, but one nitpicky language thing, another one. D1, we have leveraged business incentives. And I know we talked about that, like an example of that would be business council grants being sort of the, you know, the conduit recipient for that. I'm wondering, I, I'm taking issue with the word incentives. And I'm wondering if there's a different word that is more precise when it comes to how that sort of grant money flows between council and our entity. And, you know, it never really goes to the business as an incentive directly. And so I'm just struggling if there, if there's a better way to capture that because I don't feel like business incentives really describes what we do through that process.
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair point because Wyoming just doesn't really do incentives, honestly. But, but there are support programs and certainly business development programs that, that we try to take advantage of, you know, with, with the help of the state. So maybe that's a better characterization.
Business development programs and workforce resources.
Perfectly.
I feel better.
We can make that happen.
Feel better about that. And then I have one other word that I'm taking issue with. Two, support and fully utilize amenities to promote our entertainment, sports and cultural assets. And then we say create engaging third spaces for all. I'm not sure what role we have in creation of third spaces outside of, as we've mentioned, some of our rec facilities and things like that that do fall into that. But I think that's quite a narrow element of the third spaces that exist in town. So I'm wondering if create is the right word or if we should have a different word there.
Support. Support, you know, supporting third, third spaces for all.
I love it. Yep, that sounds great.
I like it better, but yeah.
I think it's a good.
Consider it done.
I have to, Michael.
Yeah, I think.
No, that's good. You guys did a, I was just, I just mentioned it to Carter. You guys did a really nice job, in all honesty.
I would.
Most definitely. All right.
Positive.
Any other discussion about this?
Yeah, do we have input on the highs, lows and mediums?
Yeah, how does everybody feel about?
You have a carte blanche, should we just lateral decisions or what do you?
One, one, I want to, just, just an observation, just because I'm just sitting here. So there were, there's like about 40 items altogether. And so about 22 of those were rated high priority. So that's a little more than half. Is that, I, I don't know what, if there, I mean, I don't, probably is no magic number in terms of, I think it's kind of just whatever.
Yeah, pay attention to percentages.
And we did want to note too, low priorities are still priority enough that they ended up here, so they're not.
They wouldn't let us call them all high.
Yeah, yeah, so. So low relative to the whole suite of priorities, but, but not, you know, still, still a high enough priority that it rose to the level of being included here.
I didn't disagree with any of the mediums. And I agreed with your high priorities.
Yeah, I would, I agree with it. I, I feel very comfortable with you guys looking at that and being able to take the time to gauge and measure those. And I think that having that conversation was very important.
Absolutely.
And it sounds like it's got the endorsement of the city staff as well because it came out of the task force, so I feel comfortable with it. Counsel, have any other comments, concerns about the low, medium, high?
I was ready to, I'm restless or something. I mean, this is really.
But you want me to start, you want me to start changing my ideas? All right, let's go through A first, one by one.
I just, I just, because I'm curious, because I'm probably just not remembering a conversation. But in the, and then I get back to the memo. It mentions stakeholder feedback being used to score the program into four portals. So I guess I'm just wondering if that, if, I guess, when I'm wondering is, was that done, was that done previously? Did we get some stakeholder feedback? Or is that something we plan to do going forward? Which I think would fit into our, you know, perhaps, perhaps fit in to a strategy around that budget, making the whole budget balance with, because I feel like stakeholder input, I don't, you know, I think this year will, like I said, will get by. But I think in subsequent years, if, if revenue streams continue to be a challenge, I think something like that kind of feedback from stakeholders would be, uh, would be helpful. Be helpful to me to know, okay, if we're going to have a, if it's a low priority to fertilize the grass up there.
Yeah.
grass up there, which I'm not saying. But that, that just, it would be good to know, rather than kind of, you know, the plethora of emails or testimony, you know, public hearings or whatever, it'd be good to get, to have some kind of quantifiable measure. So that, that's all I wanted to say. I just, I like that, that categorization of that high impact, high cost, high impact, low cost, whatever. I really, I do like that. I do value it, so.
Amber characterized it kind of anticlimactic, but it sounds like it, everybody feels support, real supportive of the high, the low, medium and high. So any other follow-up with that? Sounds like everybody's pretty amenable to it and.
Thumbs up, her. I, that'd be great.
Thumbs up on moving forward with the priorities.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for hanging in there with us.
All right. I think we're onto agenda review.
Mr. Mayor, referring to the grid document here, you will notice that May sixth, we started to kick off the official formal LED process for the second phase, if you will, West Ridge improvements. And then, you know, we'll travel that course throughout May and into June. Also, you'll notice that May twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, we're planning to bring a formal delivery of the entirety of the budget. You will see a, a real preliminary delivery on the sixth of May, and that is with regard to statutory requirement that we have to give you at least a real brief, brief overview of the numbers. Don't, don't anticipate any analysis associated with that. And beyond that, I always like to direct your attention to the back page, make sure we're not dropping the ball on anything or items you think we need to address. Thank you.
Questions on the upcoming work session, sessions, budget sessions, anything like that?
That comes up in May.
Yep.
It's not, it's not on here yet.
No, no, not yet. Round the table. Start with Amber.
Okay. Well, you heard about my activities last week. We had priority-based budgeting meeting number two, so I spent time doing that. Councilback and Tosh Vice Mayor was kind enough to cover my MPO policy meeting for me, so look forward to an update there. And then to just briefly touch on the work that the Parks and Recreation Advisory did, Mayor mentioned it already, but they, during April's meeting, spent a lot of time discussing various cost containment measures that, you know, weighing what the savings would be versus what the impacts would be to some of those facilities and making recommendations about things that would, you know, be manageable without dramatically diminishing quality and the ability for activities to still happen at some of those facilities. So just appreciate that conversation with those folks, you know, being the users in those, in those areas makes it much better position to help us determine where some shifts can be made without, you know, with the least impact possible. So really appreciate their insight. And I have, I got to ride on the new assist bus today along with several other counselors and have LGBTQ advisory on Friday and then fifth Tuesday next week. So I'll be out of state.
I don't have anything specific in terms of myself, I guess. I would just, I think I just want to say that I think it's good that I'm, I'm traveling to Denver again for tomorrow and Thursday. So I had kept Ross in the know because I didn't know if I was going to be able to make the budgeting, his budgeting deal he's got going on on Thursday. But it sounds like there's a good amount of people going anyway. So I think that's good. And, and probably the main reason among a few I think that's good is because I, and I, I kind of, you know, communicated this in so many words to Ross a little bit. It was, I can tell you, you know, when I was campaigning around last summer, I mean, there's maybe less than a handful of people that I talked to that even were familiar with the budget and let alone that could, you know, pick something specific out and say, oh, I have a problem with this, or I don't have a problem with this. So I think this will be a good, you know, depending on how many people show up, hopefully it's a, it's a decent amount. I think this will be a good kind of, you know, fifty thousand foot view. I mean, you know, including myself, I mean, the budget process is all new to me myself, so I'm learning a lot, too. But I think this will, you know, I think it'll be a good kind of platform for, you know, the general public to come and just see exactly, you know, what goes into a budget and that, you know, running a city, it is expensive. And, and seeing where all this money goes. And like I say, you know, going around, you know, I have literally from house to house this summer and talking to people, I got a good gauge of really who was somewhat familiar with it. And it wasn't, it was, you know, probably the vast majority wasn't as familiar as, as maybe a couple others. So, yeah, I just think that's, I think that should be a productive thing for people to show up and, and, you know, to ask questions and give them a good round overview of what a budget process is and everything that goes into it. So, so.
I have a homeless coalition tomorrow and junior services on Monday.
I know you're sad.
I'm looking for the PBB.
And I went to public health on Thursday. I'm so glad it's the fifth Tuesday next week. Yeah, I should come next Tuesday. We're doing some budget stuff for you. Okay, I'm in for real now.
So really nothing except trying to understand our process again for council on the budget. So each work session, we continue to go through, through different portions of the budget, you know, before the final vote.
Mayor, counselor, thank you, sir, for that question. Generally, what we do is we over the major themes of the budget that came out as a result of a lot of the discussions that we've had leading up to May delivery. So tonight's a good example of that. Certainly when we spent a lot of time on the Capitol, that was a good example of things that you kind of helped us fill in the blanks with. So, yeah, we will talk a lot about employee impacts, we'll talk a lot about revenue forecasts, talk a lot about the enterprises, how they're performing, and maybe what we may need to adjust. Those are examples of major things. Likely talk about the subsidies that were brought up here a couple times tonight. All of that will be covered in our, in our budget work sessions in May. Then you have the month, basically, to consume that information. And then we are obligated to consider it on a formal basis, the second Tuesday, excuse me, third Tuesday, second regular meeting of June.
Budget doesn't take three readings. It's just write one thing and it's done.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One copy, Gary. Yep, yep. Thanks, Carl. Carl.
At a Casper Housing Authority Board meeting last Thursday, we discussed the fact that the AmeriCorps team that they had planned for work at Urban Thistle Farm lost their funding. And so Housing Authority was looking at ways to raise the $20,000 themselves to afford putting that team back together and still carrying out that important work. And thankfully, the Zimmerman Family Foundation stepped in and provided the funding for that team. So big thanks and many props to that foundation. The team, you know, is needed to build their geodesic domes and create the watering systems and do all the other renovations necessary for their scope of the work they're wanting to do at the old North Casper Elementary School. Had a RAM, a WAM Region Four meeting yesterday morning. We got a legislative update from our, our new executive director, Ashley, recapping kind of the work of the 2025 legislative session and giving us a heads up about some of the interim committee work that's on the horizon. She's going to have plenty of opportunities for us to help advocate alongside WAM staff and representatives for solutions and issues pertinent to our cities. So hopefully there'll be some opportunities for all of us to kind of get plugged in on those and kind of divide and conquer in that regard. All the folks in our region, all dealing with very similar issues to us, especially in regards to cost containment, the loss of state and federal grant funding and the other things we've discussed this evening. We have a WAM board meeting Thursday this week, so I'll report back on that at our next meeting. And then lastly, I believe Lieutenant Mike Ogden is retiring from Casper meeting after twenty years of service in law enforcement. So I want to congratulate him and thank him for his service. And that is all I have.
Right. I will be gone the first week of June. So since Amber does such a great job as mayor, we'll give her a chance to be vice mayor.
I'll have to do that one.
It's very simple.
Yeah, it's got to be if I'm doing it. Tomorrow, we'll have a EDJPP meeting with Radiant to discuss some of the things that we talked about tonight. So we got that meeting coming up this past week at the Priority Based Budget Committee. Amber and Randy, my staff, thank everybody for all of that. That was good meetings. A lot done. Thursday, we had the Natchon County Council Government Breakfast Meeting, and I think that went well. It's a good discussion from each of the different municipalities, and I think it was very productive. Friday, we had our county city monthly lunch with the county commissioners, talked a lot about, a lot of stuff. With them and discuss things that affect all of us. That was a good, good event as well. Yesterday, we had a fire code requirement meeting with the members of the fire department on, on some of the codes that have been updated. That was a very informational meeting. Enjoyed that. So. The MPO, sorry. Went to the MPO for you. It was a good one for you to miss. Not a lot, a lot happened to us. So it talked about, for the upcoming projects, they're going to be doing non-motorized counts as, as well as traffic counts. And they're looking at possibly the counters so that we can save some money on, save some time on, on those counts so that we can get them done better. So great idea. So just one of those counters alone, less than, than paying to have them come up and do the count for us. One takeaway I have on there. So, yes. So, but yeah, that's all I got.
Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Could I mention one thing before I let you cap the meeting? Thanks. I won't be able to make it, unfortunately, but I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that Friday at 10:00 AM at the Tara Thompson Building, they're doing the signing ceremony for the Natchon County Court of Inversion. So if anyone can make it, it would be well appreciated. And thanks for Counselor Sweeney pointing out that our city attorneys worked really hard on that. And, yeah, just if anyone can make it, that'd be great.
Awesome. Swearing in on three lateral police officers. I mean, it was great. Two of them are married, engaged, rather. Yeah. So that was really cool that I was able to do that. I'm a wire lab. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
Which I want to just, just kind of mention that we are, this is probably the most as mayor I've ever done swearing in in the last several months. And so I think that's attributed to the leadership of our chief and the work that he has done. Like I've mentioned, those, the room is packed with support. And so it's just been, been great to be able to swear in so many police officers and community service officers as well. The Vice Mayor mentioned the fire code requirement meeting, but really, really well. Also, I will be going to the WAM board meeting to do a welcoming. So I'm looking forward to doing that very quickly. And then I have the ceremony, signing ceremony that the Vice Mayor and I will be at. I'll make a few remarks and probably have a proclamation. And then I think there's some ceremonial signing that the city will take a part in, that we'll be able to do. I'm looking forward to that. And like Kyle said, if you can make it, that would be fantastic. Arbor Day proclamation on Friday as well at 1:00 PM. I'll look forward to doing that as well. I think it's, can't remember the park, I'll have to remember. It is at Long Park, is where I'm going to be doing that. So, Long Park, I don't think I've ever heard of Long Park. Where's Long Park at? Oh, that's right.
It's the long.
Yes. I am batting about a hundred today.
Long green stretch.
Okay, I get it, Mike. And that's all I've really got. And so I'm looking forward to all those. And thank you again to the task force, thank you to the staff, and thank you for council for all the work you guys are doing. Appreciate it. Have a great next week off.
Yeah, right.
Thank you for acknowledging that, Pat. That's good for me.